Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the quarterly board meeting of the Kentucky Retirement System to order. And I think, is it Michael going to read the legal public statement?
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute Section 61.826.
We just lost him.
Yes, Ms. Hale, Vicky, can you, would you be able to proceed? We just lost Michael.
Oh, absolutely. I can proceed. I will start at the beginning.
Thank you.
This is the regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute Section 61.826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road, Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. I ask if you are speaking and not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. Please ensure that you are on camera when making or seconding a motion or casting a vote. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will establish, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date.
Thank you very much. And Sherry, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Ms. Bova.
Here.
Ms. Eves.
Here.
Mr. Lane. Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Summers. And Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
And Sherry, any public comment?
No, ma'am, no public comment for this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two dates, April 4th and June 17th. Is there any discussion?
Move approval of both.
Okay, thank you very much, Dave. And is there a second?
I'll second. It's Crystal.
Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have the hardworking Joint Retirement Health Plan Committee report to say, at least it was a busy month for you guys. And I think, Keith, are you gonna take the opening of the meeting?
I think we usually let the real expert here, Connie, take this.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Piercy and Ms. Hampton. We, the committee, the Joint Committee met on September the 2nd to discuss two main components. First, it's the non-Medicare-eligible retirees that are on the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan, which is a self-insured plan under the state of Kentucky that they offer to retirees, early retirees, and to employees. So this has been practiced for a number of years. You've had the same plans to choose from for the past two years. They really haven't changed them a lot since they branded the names specifically to Kentucky back in, I think, 2014 or prior to that. So the first point and recommendation is for the percentage plan, contribution plan for the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan. That has been selected by the committee since, like I said, 2014 as the Living Well PPO Plan. It's the plan that has co-pays. It's the plan that has a co-pay structure for doctor and for pharmacy. It is the one that retirees have, there's the most retirees enrolled in this plan. But it, and it also is the plan that, in the second bullet point, it is the contribution rate for the hazardous duty spouse and dependent children. So, and those premiums did increase. Tobacco fee remains the same, though. And those premiums, the reason I'm not speaking of them is they're filed with the legislation on September the 15th, which is Monday. So we just can't state it in a public meeting. Tobacco use is the $40.80 for the different couple, family, parent plus on the KEEP plan. The access to consumer-directed health plans, three of the plans have an embedded HRA, Health Reimbursement Account, that's funded by the premiums, and KPPA does not have to fund. So they can use that to offset expenses before the deductible is met. And lots of families use this plan to help their expenses when they're, they've got surgeries and other things planned that allows them to max their out-of-pocket pretty early, and then they get 100% coverage after that. Next slide, Sherry. And the last component of that is the Living Well Promise incentive, which has been in place for a large number of years. For example, the people this year that didn't complete the Living Well Promise, which is an assessment, they have to complete online through Castlight. It's a wellness provider for the Department of Employee Insurance, state employees. And that's between January and July 1 every year. And we do send out about eight different materials, various materials, to remind people to complete this promise before July, including emails directly to the retirees who did not take the promise and needed to complete it in June, May and June, we did two this year. So that was the suggestion retirees had, and we were able to accommodate. Number two is, we would set the default plan. The Living Well High Deductible Plan is a plan that has a high deductible. It's still covers 70/30, 70% covered by the plan, 30 by the member, but is more of a catastrophic-type plan. It does give the retirees coverage, though, if they're defaulted into this plan. They have the next month as a new retiree to select an entirely new plan because of the statute. So this plan would allow that, and we would like to recommend that anybody that fails to complete the promise or complete the, this enrollment into, as a new retiree, that they are defaulted and given an option to select a plan of their choice. They do forget they have to, you know, do this. Sometimes transitioning from active to retired, they assume it might roll over. So we have, we have this as a backup for them, and it allows them to, to have coverage. We have about 24 people in this plan. So just to let you, the number is usually small because most people do fill out an application and do, but that's, that's enough to, you know, give some, and I'm sure some of them did change over to a different type of plan, as they're allowed to. So number three is, roll that down, please, Sherry, thank you, recommendation for a cross-reference option. And they would have to be selecting a family plan, and it would have to be like an active employee plus a retired employee, and they can get possibly the, the family coverage at a little bit cheaper rate because it's, it's split between that active agency and the retirement system. Or it can be two retirees that are on the KEEP plan that have a, a family plan that can access the cross-reference. At times, it is cheaper, a premium for them, but it is, all of the plans are individually rated by the actuaries, so the premiums are set as such. But the premiums went up, I will tell you why they increased. It's the same story on the Medicare side. They increased because of increased claims utilization. Not sure if we still have some COVID people catching up on their, you know, surgeries and different things. They think that might be a component, but really, there's a lot of new drugs, there's a lot of drug costs, and there's a lot of changes in that area that's causing the premium to go up. And you're going to see that continue somewhat next year. So they did increase the deductibles, out-of-pockets, and they did create us a few details like that, that, that was discussed in the, the plan. And of course, retirees will be notified when we send their mailing out. They usually get it by the very last of the month for October 1, open enrollment for non-Medicare-eligible retirees. So I think, Sherry, when you roll down and see if we have another minute, no. So that would be your, you can roll all of the non-Medicare up into one vote, Mr. Piercy or Ms. Hampton. Oh, yeah, I forgot the Medicare second-year payer, number four. Please forgive me. That, the reason, they aren't charging a separate premium for this plan. This is the plan, those, that is the retirees who are Medicare-eligible, go back to work, but we can't offer them a plan where Medicare pays this primary. So the legislative, legislators gave them the ability in the statute to access these KEEP plans, and they gave DEI the ability to rate that plan higher in premium if they needed to, but that has not taken place. The rate is the same as for all retirees in this categories on these plans. And so reference number one above is, is that being the premiums and the contribution, et cetera.
Connie, is it your, is it your preference that you roll these non-Medicare up, or just to wait till the end and get all of them?
We, no, it's, it's, they do, well, see, when we identify them, there's about three to four, right now, I think there's close to 500 of them. So.
No, Connie, what she's asking for, this is Vicky, I have recommended, because there's so many, that you go through all of the recommendations, Medicare, non-Medicare, and there's only one motion, which is to adopt the recommendations of the Retiree Health Plan Committee as presented in the materials. So she was just asking, is your preference to have one vote on all the recommendations for the non-Medicare-eligible, and a second vote for the Medicare-eligible, or, as I recommended, they can all be taken care of in one vote?
I believe Ms. Hale's correct. You can take that option to select, you know, all at the end would be fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, I'll go on to the Medicare-eligible. These are the retirees that are enrolled in the Humana plans, which we, you know, bid out for RFP. Actually, the state of Kentucky did that. So the recommendation for the contribution rate for the Medicare-eligible plans for 2026, recommendation is, is the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan be the contribution rate for retirees who have 100% of coverage under the trust based on their service credit of 240 months of service or greater, and participate in the systems prior to July 1, 2003. So $199.94 would be that contribution rate. The second bullet, it's the Premium Plan be selected, which is what I just stated with the, in the first bullet, and that be for the hazardous duty spouse, independent. So the third bullet is the Premium Plan rate itself needs to be set at $199.94. And the Essential Medicare Advantage Plan be set at $55.10. Last year, the $199 was 144, and the $55 was zero premium. So that is a change. And this last bullet is kind of, is kind of discussed further in two, number two, but I'm going to go over briefly the reason the medical-only plan premium is, is in the first part of this bullet. It's going to be $194.23. And then we have Medicare Advantage Premium Plan, and we have the Medicare Advantage Essential Mirror Plan. The Mirror Plans are for retirees who haven't gotten Part B, or retirees who have an exception due to going to a provider prior to becoming Medicare eligible, that will not accept Medicare payment from Humana unless it's like a supplement. So that's how we came up with the Mirror Plan. We have 90 people in and out of this plan as they gain Part B most of the year. There are two that are in it for the exception because they're at a transplant facility that won't contract with Medicare, I mean, with Humana, but does take Medicare allowable. So this is how we work with them, because that's basically a hospital that will not do that, but they will bill Humana and work with them on this Mirror Plan, and that has been successful for that one retiree. And one other retiree is seeing a provider that's a similar situation. It's just not transplanted, it's a chronic illness, and they take the Medicare payment, and they don't have a contract with Humana. So those are the only two that way. I'm going to point out that the premiums are going to be, you know, because it has to add the dental plan, because we added that to the Medicare Advantage, thus the Mirror Plan gets that, and that's a little bit different admin fee. So altogether, the Premium Plan is going to cost, the Medicare Advantage Mirror Premium Plan is going to cost $404.67. And then the Essential would be $264.56. So looking at those amounts, and number two just talks in depth about what I stated about the surgery at another hospital, specialists that won't take Medicare. And this has been since 2013 that we've only had two. And we have 65,000 enrolled lives in the Medicare plan. So we've, you know, the retirees in Humana, and we have worked well with retirees in unique situations to provide their benefit.
Connie, the premium, the premium you're quoting, is that the family, or is that the individual?
No, it's individual. And the problem is here, again, that they would, if they have 240 months of of coverage, they're still, if they don't have Part B, going to be paying $204.76 out-of-pocket until they get their Part B and get enrolled into. Now, the people on the exception don't pay that extra, they just pay the premium, because the exception waives this admin fee, which is, the plan cost is a lot more than the Medicare Advantage Plans. You're looking at, so you have to take the medical-only premium and add it to an individual drug plan that Humana offers specifically for this group. And it costs more to do that, that way. So it's just a process that's been in place to protect retirees that just really can't get coverage when they're seen out of network provider that refuses to bill with Medicare. And then it gives people an opportunity when they first retire, if they don't have Part B, it enrolls them in a plan that allows them to get medical benefits and drugs until they can enroll in Part B. So their drug coverage is paid, and, and so that's what that, that premium is paying for. It's paying for what Medicare would have normally paid for Part B out-of-pocket for Medicare coverage. So Medicare pays basically 80%, and the plan would peg the rest for Part B. So that's how that works specifically. And I've already went over the two people. And I went over, number three is the default plan, which we recommend. It's the Medicare Medical Only Plan, as it has been in the past, for any retirees, independents, because it prevent, if we enroll them in this plan as a default, it keeps any plan they chose to go into Medicare Advantage, for example, someone else, it won't interfere with that and gives them a chance to cancel this plan. But if they really fail to get coverage and they need it, they're going to have coverage, and they can file an exception if they need more coverage with us. So those are the voting. I think the voting motions now would apply. Do you have any questions about any of these areas?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have a question, but Connie, I just want to, I guess, just give you an affirmation that I'm so grateful for your expertise in this area, and you clearly have both a great deal of professionalism, but advocacy for retirees in a very difficult and complicated area with a lot of moving parts, changing laws. And so I just want to say, I really appreciate your efforts in this area. You explain it well, and clearly your competence is a great service to the system. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I firmly believe that you do the right thing, and financially, and get your retirees to engage in being weller, weller, well-being, and taking better care of themselves, works to save everyone money and let them live a better quality of life. So I have lots of people helping me, but thank you, your kind words, appreciate them.
Thank you, Dave. And Connie, I'm sure the, the whole committee and the whole board would echo Dave's comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I wonder if I could have a motion to approve the seven recommendations of the Retiree Health Plan Committee?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Vicky, did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, okay. Is there a second? Oh, let me see, is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Is there any further discussion? Okay, without that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Hearing none, the motions, motions are adopted. Again, thank you, Vicky. Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you, Keith.
Ms. Hampton, I have two informational items at the bottom of the memo, and then I'm finished.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. First, Erin Sarat did provide an update on their representative for the Kentucky Group Health Insurance Board. And that's on the KEEP plans. So we go monthly and review any contract compliance reports, presentations from vendors, and see how the retirees are engaging and state employees are engaging in wellness and other programs they have. So we have a representative, we've actually had two, and the committees looked at those, but I need, I'm waiting on information from DEI about this position. So we're going to bring it back to the February Joint Committee meeting. And then the last bullet point is the October 23rd, 2025 Joint Committee meeting is going to be canceled because of a conflict with the KPPA impact form. So that agenda was informational only. It goes over the drugs and any changes for next year, but we can delay that until February as well, and give you that list, because Humana is very good at notifying retirees about changes they make on the formulary. And so with that, I'm finished. Thank you, Ms. Hampton and Mr. Piercy.
Okay, well, thank you very much, again. And next on the list is the external auditor planning. Mike, are you going to introduce the auditors?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hampton. With us today is Leland Miller. He's a partner with Aid Bailey, and he's out of their Idaho office, as well as Roger Alfaro. He's out of their California office, another partner. And today, they are going to go over some required And today they are going to go over some required communications related to the external audit of the Kentucky Retirement System. So I will turn that over to them.
All righty, well, thank you. Just checking to make sure if everybody can hear me. Okay, great. You know, as, as Mike mentioned, my name is Leland Miller, partner with, with Ida Bailey. We, and also with Roger Alfaro. We appreciate this opportunity to be able to spend a few minutes with you and kind of go over some of the required planning communication as we're going through and starting the audit. But before I get into that, I just wanted to briefly introduce Ida Bailey. And we're, this is the first year of the audit that there were done. We were just selected this past, past summer, so we appreciate that opportunity. Ida Bailey is a, what we refer to as a top twenty firm when it comes to size and the number of employees. Our offices ranges from the California coast to as far east as Ohio. And we have over thirty-five hundred employees. One of the areas, you know, we typical accounting firm and providing all the different services from accounting to auditing the tax and other business consulting and everything. But one of the areas that we specialize in is one is our governmental accounting, and then two is the public pension plans. Between all the offices involved and the people involved, we have over, we probably have about twenty, twenty-five people that work on pension plans throughout the year. And we have about sixteen or seventeen plans, you know, including Kentucky as well as a neighbor in West Virginia and a little south in Mississippi. And of course, we have in the Midwest and Idaho and other places throughout, throughout the nation. And so just that gives you an idea, at least from this experience and the expertise in that we have when it comes, comes to pension plans. So as part of our planning is the planning memo or letter. It's included in the packet, I think about page eighteen. But basically, it just summarizes what are our responsibilities as your, as your auditors. So we're required to do the audit according to the generally accepted auditing standards, but also the government auditing standards. And it's these standards that provide the guidance and the direction of what we need to do to make sure that we do enough to be able to give an opinion on, on those financial statements. And one of the key items that we report on now and as well as when we do the final report is the fact that we are independent, independent in fact, and as well as in appearance. And without that independence, then we would be unable to be able to provide an opinion to, to the financial statement. Now, in your circumstances, when we're putting together the financial statement, it is also included in that annual comprehensive financial report. And not only is there financial information, but there's non-financial information. And just to give you a heads up, we're not opining on the non-financial information, which is your introductory section, investment section, actuary, and a few other, other areas. However, we do look at them for reasonless, but we do not give an opinion on those things. So our scope is to go through and identify areas to test, and we'll test on a sample basis. There's not enough time in the world to be able to test every transaction, but we do go through and identify areas. And what, when we go through and identify these areas to test, we'll go through and do a risk assessment. Not saying that, that we're anticipating issues with these areas, but basically that when it comes to experience with other pension plans and within the auditing arena, there are just certain areas that have potential for, for some significant risks, and that we are required by the auditing standards to at least address those risks and make sure that we have addressed them. And so in there, one, just to briefly go over what those significant risks are, is the first one is management override of internal controls. And this applies to every, every audit, whether for government, for-profit, not-for-profit, is the fact that there's always a risk that if management wanted to collude, they could override the, the controls. And so that is a risk area. So we'll go through and we'll do, perform some additional testing. We'll focus on areas that when there's financial statement fraud, you know, when it comes to journal entries, we hold fraud interviews. Not that we're going in and accusing people, but we're getting their idea of, hey, what do you think about the controls? You know, is there any concerns or has anything ever come to your attention during this past year? So we address that management internal, override of internal controls. The other one is applies to everybody is improper recognition of revenues. Now, with the, with your system, it's relatively straightforward because there's two main revenues. You've got your contributions coming in, and you've got your, your revenue from your, your investments. However, it is considered a risk from the auditing standards. And so we'll go through and just do some additional items just to make sure for a proper cutoff, proper reporting of, of those revenues. The other thing is, is that, you know, there's the big huge calculation, the net pension liability between us and your, your people and the actuaries. The actuaries pull up all the data together and prepare an amount of saying, hey, based on the information at this point in time, you know, your, your pension liability will be a certain dollar amount. Of course, you offset that against any of your assets, net assets from the system. And so that net pension liability is, is, you know, drastically reduced. However, that is just a key area that we take a look at. So we focus on working with the actuaries, reviewing their report, and gaining an understanding better about their, the variable things that they put, they put in there. With the amount of investments that you have, you include, your investments also include the, you're going to have to excuse me just one second. I didn't realize my computer was low on the battery. So as I'm trying, as I'm moving around, it's not that I'm being weird or anything like that. I'm just trying to plug in, I don't lose you altogether and have to cause the meeting to be canceled because someone was lost during the. All right, so as I was saying, when it comes to your investments, you have some alternatives for hard-to-value investments. And those are investments where you're relying other outside parties to gain evaluation, the types of investments, these are your private equity, your real estate and those things. And so we'll look at areas within your, with your investments. So, hang on. I'm like, I'm in one of those dreams where you're walking down the college campus, going to class, and you realize you're not properly clothed. Everything that could go wrong is going wrong here, so appreciate your patience. So it's, and then the last area we take a look at is the calculation of your, of the benefits for the distribution. And we focus on the first year because that is typically where if errors can occur, then that's where, where it happens. So the last thing is that we'll give some reports of the regulations, the issues or significant difficulties and so forth. So, but that's the technical aspect of our planning memo. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Roger, who'll give you an update on where we are in the audit so far. So thank you for your time and your patience.
I'm Roger Alfaro with Ida Bailey. And as Leland indicated, as part of our responsibilities, we are expressing an opinion on the financial statements. That includes obtaining an understanding of internal control. And so for the last several weeks, we've been working with system staff to identify within the org chart who has responsibility over various areas. We have been planning and scoping out key business processes that also include the areas that Leland mentioned that we would consider to be significant risks. We're also identifying the risks of where material misstatement could occur. And we're asking and documenting our understanding of internal controls that are used to mitigate those risks. Over the last several weeks, we've conducted a number of different meetings with staff in a variety of different areas. And, and we continue to have ongoing meetings with the professionals in your organization over member services, retiree payroll, retiree healthcare, the investment area, contributions, accounting, as well as information technology, so that we have a good understanding of the general controls as well as application controls that relate to key systems within the organization that help produce accurate financial information, which ultimately is used for the financial statements. As in addition to those interviews and reviewing documentation, we've also been performing what we refer to as walkthroughs of these processes. And that also gives us the ability to inspect a variety of reports, reconciliations, and data. It's an important process to review documentation of policies, conduct the interviews with staff. But then at the same time, we also go through, we select transactions and walk them through from beginning to end so that we can ensure that the controls that are being asserted to us are actually designed and implemented in place as part of this process. Based on that information that we gather during this risk assessment and planning phase, we're using that data to determine the actual tests that are applied to the ending balances that are included in the financial statements. And so at this point, we've been working with staff to identify samples that need to be selected for further in-depth audit procedures, as well as sending out confirmations. And we're going through some analysis in the trial balance, again, to determine the further audit procedures that we'll be performing as part of this process. As of the current status of things, we're working closely with the system staff, and we appreciate the assistance that they have provided us in terms of access to individuals, access to documents, access to information that's needed in this first-year audit to, to be able to gather the information we need to, to perform our work. And that concludes our, our update on the status of the audit as of this point in time.
Hey, thank you very much. And are there any questions, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Alfaro? Okay, thank you again, and we look forward to seeing you at the end of the year. And with that, Michael, you're back up with the quarterly financial reports.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton, and thank you to Ida Bailey, appreciate them. Before I go through the quarterlies, I wanted to present this to the KRS Board. This is the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the ACV that was issued six thirty, two thousand twenty-four. And as you know, we separated our ACVs between the C system and the K system. And this is the K system's unique and specific award for their own ACV. So I wanted to present that to the board today.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Did you know I used to be a greater?
I would believe it. I'm sure your comments were well thought out and accepted by all participants, for sure. We're going to start on page twenty-one, and then we're going to scroll down to page twenty-two. And when we look at the bottom of that page, and you'll see the total net fiduciary position for KRS is nearly nine point nine billion dollars. That's up fourteen point seven four percent or one point, almost one point three billion compared to the prior year amount of eight point six billion. The three pension plans, they total seven billion dollars. The five point one for the non-hazardous, the one point one for the hazardous, and seven hundred forty-two million for the state police. That's an increase of one point oh five billion dollars, or seventeen point six three percent over the prior year. The three insurance plans total two point eight billion, and that's an increase of eight point one eight percent or two hundred fifteen million. There are various notes documenting changes, plus or minus ten percent and over one million. For example, if we go back up to page twenty-one, note six shows a change in the real return investment category, and the note for that was due to additional funding to new managers. Also, right there, we can see that the total investments at fair value increased by fifteen point nine nine percent or one point three billion. The pension plans are up nineteen point two seven percent or one point one billion by themselves. And the insurance plans are up eight point seven one percent or two hundred and twenty million. Most of the asset classes have large upside swings compared to the prior year, including public equities. That is up fifteen point six percent or four hundred eighty-two million across all of the plans. Specialty credit is up three hundred eighty, three hundred ninety-eight million or twenty-three point, twenty-three point oh nine percent. And core fixed incomes value is up thirteen point nine seven percent or two hundred thirty-four million. And as mentioned, the real return is also up one hundred and fifty-two million or twenty-two point two four percent. If we go ahead and look at the next statement, the combining statement of changes in fiduciary net position, that's pages twenty-three and twenty-four, and I'm going to have Sheri go down near the bottom of twenty-four so that we can see this net increase or decrease in fiduciary net position for the year. It's at one point two six nine billion overall. And in comparison, the prior year, six thirty, two thousand twenty-four, also had an increase in fiduciary net position of one point one eight billion dollars. So this year's is eighty-seven point eight million dollars higher or seven point three, seven point four three percent. The three pension plans show eight hundred and forty-six million, one hundred and nineteen million, and ninety million net increase for a total of one point one billion. And that's higher than the prior year increase of eight hundred and seventy-eight million. The three insurance plans show one hundred and forty-two million, fifty-six point two million, and seventeen point four million for a total of two hundred and fifteen million. And that is eighty-eight million or twenty-nine percent less than the prior year increase of three hundred and four million dollars. That overall increase of one point two six nine billion is a combination of one point six billion in total contributions, plus nine hundred and eighty-five million of net investment income. And that being larger than the one point three seven five billion of deduction, which we can go ahead and look at page twenty-five and get into the details of those a little more in the contribution reports. So this top chart is the pensions. It shows that the net contributions, the yellow line there shows positive four hundred and eighty-one point seven million, twenty-six point two million, and thirty-seven point seven million respectively. That's five hundred and forty-five point six million total. In addition, if we remove the net investment income of one hundred and twenty-nine point three million from the non-hazardous plan, twenty-eight point eight million from the hazardous plan, and twenty million from the SPRS system, two of the three plans have positive net cash flow for the year. The hazardous is negative at two point six million if we remove that investment income. In comparison to the same twelve-month period last year, the member contributions overall are up nine point one million dollars. Employer contributions are down thirty-five point nine million, and that's due to lower rates by the Office of State Budget Director. The ALC is down in the non-hazardous plan by thirty-five point one million dollars. General fund appropriations are up sixty million dollars in non-hazardous and twenty-five million dollars in SPRS. Excuse me. Benefit payments and refunds are up twenty-four point five million dollars across all the pension plans, and admin costs have increased slightly by seventy-three thousand dollars. The realized gains for this year far exceed the realized amounts from the prior year by two hundred and twenty million, and the unrealized gains are lower than the unrealized gains of the prior year by sixty-nine point four million. The insurance chart, which is also on that page, is further down, shows the net contributions for the three insurance plans, negative five point five million, negative point five million, and negative five point five million for SPRS. And that's due to the lower contributions, the lower ALC, and a lower or nonexistent Humana gain share payment this year compared to last year. And if we remove the net investment income of those three insurance plans, we show negative cash flow in all three of the plans. That's the financial statements and the contribution report. If, if there's some questions on that, I will field them, otherwise we can move on. But I'll pause for a moment.
Are there any questions, Mike, at this point? Okay.
Perfect. Page twenty-six is our new past due invoices report for the KRS system. I apologize, that's a little small. In the past, we showed you the total open amount of the KRS system, which included some items that weren't past due. But now we're focusing on past due items, and this was as of June thirty. The bottom total is nearly six point seven million dollars in total past due items from employer invoicing. Four of the top ten past due employers by dollar amount are currently being worked on by KPPA legal. And their past due amounts total six point one million out of that six point seven. And since June, three of the top ten employers have paid their past due invoices totaling over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, essentially leaving a past due amount that is not being worked on by legal of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Monthly, the ERSI team updates me on the past due amounts. And the chart at the bottom of this page kind of shows the annual history. Starting on June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, there was a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine past due invoices. totaling seven point one million dollars. And as of June thirty twenty twenty five, there were five hundred and twelve past due invoices totaling the six point million dollars discussed above. So in combination between the ERSI team and the legal team, this has been a big focus. There's been an invoice task force put together that's working on lots of things. And that has resulted in the decrease in the number of invoices as well as the amount. And we are improving processes to streamline that billing process, that collection process to ensure that we try to capture all of those invoices and collect that money timely for the benefit of the system. The next page shows the penalty invoices.
Mr. Liam, Ms. Bova has her hand up with a question.
Yeah, I just had a question about the seven counties past due invoices.
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
So with seven counties, because of the there was a legal stay and we were unable to continue to invoice them for their contribution. So tho- those invoices that are outstanding with seven counties right now were the invoices that were issued prior to that particular employer going into litigation with KPPA. It is our opinion that they owe much, much more than that, but we have to work through the legal process to obtain that. So currently, that's the invoices that are on our books. And we haven't billed them since that particular case went into the legal process.
Do you have an estimate of that, Mike? Just a
It's extremely large.
Yeah, okay, extremely large.
I would, my question would be just, and I don't, I don't understand all of this exactly, but it, this, to me, this looks like a misrepresentation of the actual money we are owed.
I would agree with that. So again, this is, this is our chart, which is the open invoices that are still outstanding, and we have not invoiced them because of a legal requirement that we weren't allowed to do so because of the legal litigation stay. But yes, this is active litigation and it would probably be in our best interest not to discuss that outside of a closed meeting of what their total amount is and in our legal strategy for obtaining it.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Do you have more, Mike? Yeah?
Uh, yes. Those are the penalty invoices that were issued during the quarter. We had one penalty invoice that was waived for a thousand dollars. We had zero other penalty invoices created for the quarter, and there were four penalty invoices that were paid during the quarter that existed prior to that. The next page gets into our admin budget. And this is the summary chart that I put together with all of the notes. I'm going to kind of go through these notes because this was the annual amount. But they're there for you to read. But basically, for the year ended, we spent nearly thirty five million dollars, which was one point eight million or five percent below the annual budget amount of thirty seven million. This is in the personnel line item only. The personnel total. This was despite the personnel cabinet significantly adjusting salaries for various IT-related positions during the fourth quarter. We did receive an additional one hundred and ten thousand dollars from the Office of State Budget to apply toward those. However, we did not need to utilize them. The following specific line items were below or above budget as follows. The salaries, wages and overtime were nine hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars below. Employer paid retirement was seven hundred and one thousand dollars below. Both FICA and employer paid sick leave were below by a hundred and sixty two thousand. We did have a line item over budget, which was employer paid health insurance over by two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the year. The next large line item is the legal contracts line item. Those were seven hundred forty four thousand dollars below for the budget year. Couple of those items, Frost Brown Todd was four ninety four below. SKO and Kellerman were combined to be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars below. And our hearing officers line item for external hearing officers were below. As you know, we did hire some internal hearing officers. And we are not utilizing the external officers as much as we did in the past. The next three line items, all of those categories were under budget by one point two million dollars in total. And then the operational total is also under budget for eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the year. This is driven by the information technology line item being six hundred and forty two thousand dollars below and not having a Louisville office. And our travel overall being a hundred and forty two thousand dollars below budget. There were a few line items in that operational category that were over budget. Our copier rental was seventeen thousand dollars over. Equipment maintenance was twenty one thousand dollars over. Our telephone system was eighty eight thousand dollars over. And our miscellaneous line item was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars over. I'm going to talk about that a little more in a minute. Most of that miscellaneous line item related to JP Morgan Bank fees. We did the prior year JP Morgan Bank fees of sixty thousand dollars was paid in this fiscal year ended six thirty twenty five as well as the current fee. So we had two charges in that miscellaneous line item that made up for that. But I'll show you a little bit more on the chase fees in a moment. There's no question on the admin budget. We can go to the bottom of page. I believe it's going to be maybe thirty one. Yeah. So this is the JP Morgan Chase fees that we were charged on a monthly basis. A few years ago, we began transitioning the JP Morgan accounts from a hybrid payment method to a hard dollar interest. And so we were charged the fees and their cycle runs through May. And as you can see, there was sixty six thousand dollars just for the fiscal year that was charged in fiscal year twenty five. However, we get hard dollar interest and there's five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars of hard dollar interest earned for fiscal year. Starting in June of twenty five, there is a new master agreement with the state for JP Morgan Chase. We will no longer be charged fees at all. And you can see that we didn't get any fees in June, but we are being charged. We are being provided hard dollar interest at two point five percent on all of our accounts. And we did earn thirty five thousand dollars in that. We do our best to keep those accounts minimal, the balances in those accounts minimal so that we can invest it at the higher rate at Mellon. But those are the fees earned by the accounts related to the pension systems there.
And I believe, Mike, if I'm correct, since we've only been doing this a short while, that the net of those two numbers is what you're contributing to Steve's program. Is that correct?
Yeah, that interest that's earned and the net of that is definitely going into the systems to be invested by the investment group, for sure.
And I'm sure Steve appreciates it.
We appreciate every penny, yes.
Thank you, Mike. This is, this is good work.
Well, as Connie Pettyjohn said, I have a big team behind me and we all do our best to to make it smooth and present it properly. So thank you.
Is there anything else?
I do not have anything today.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, we have now, Dewan, you have the hazardous duty requests?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Today, we have eleven positions with the Department for Natural Resources, specifically the Division of Forestry being requested for hazardous duty. All of these positions being requested require active fire suppression and prevention with wildland fires and serve on the Wildland Fire Incident Command Team. KPPA staff has reviewed the position questionnaires and job descriptions. And I believe these positions do meet the statutory guidelines for hazardous duty pursuant to KRS six one point three one five. Therefore, we request the board approve these positions as hazardous. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Dave. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the hazardous duty coverage request. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the excuse me, Investment Committee Report. So we have, is Pruitt on the line yet?
Ma- Ms. Hampton, it's, it's the KRS election ballot.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got all my papers spread out here. Okay, so this is, this is Kristen. You want, please take the election ballot.
Good morning. I'm in the boardroom just confirming everyone can hear me.
Yes, ma'am, we can. Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about the upcoming KERS election. The term for our two elected members ends on March thirty first, twenty twenty six. And the election to fill those positions will open January twentieth of twenty twenty six. We had six individuals submit all of the required documents by the July thirty first deadline. Each of those individuals agreed to a background check. We have received those results with nothing of concern noted. Four of those applicants are employed. And if you are employed, you have to be reviewed by the Attorney General to ensure there's not a constitutional eligibility issue. And that response, the applications received and response from the Attorney General were included in board books. And no issues were noted from the Attorney General. So today we are asking the board to vote on the ballot that will be presented to the voting members in January. Statutes indicate that you are allowed to put up to three individuals per open position. So since we have two open positions, you would be allowed to put up to six people on the ballot. Since we have six individuals, the vote can be done in one of two ways. You could vote to place everyone on the ballot in one vote. Or you can go through an individual roll call where each individual selects who they would like to place on the ballot. That choice is up to the board. So, Ms. Hampton, I'll turn it back over to you to discuss how you want to proceed with that.
Thank you, Kristen. I do have one question. Are there, is it the top two vote getters that come on the board, or is there two separate ballots in the top one on the two, on this, on the ballot?
It's the top two. One ballot, top two individuals.
Okay. Okay, if there's no objection, I would recommend that we make a motion to place all six individuals on the ballot. So is there any objection to that from the board?
I don't think so.
Hearing none. I'd like to hear a motion.
I'll wait.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm not sure who said, who moved it.
Crystal.
Okay, okay. And I'm, Sherry's got it, I'm sure. Okay, so.
Mr. Mr. Piercy, Mr. Piercy gave the motion and Dr. Miller seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear right. Okay, so with no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Madam Chair. I would like, I would like to be recorded as abstaining.
Okay. You got that, Sherry?
Yes, ma'am, and I will note that Mr. Summers is actually coming on as we speak, so I will notate his attendance.
I'm sorry, I'm like.
Thank you. No, thanks. Meetings happen. Okay, we are, we're getting ready to go to number ten on the agenda, which is the Investment Committee Report.
You need a vote.
I thought I voted, I did.
Mr. Atkins had abstained from voting. Did, if, if so, I missed it. I apologize.
There, I think there wasn't.
Have the votes, Sherry.
Yes, there was a vote, and then Mr. Atkins asked to be noted as abstaining.
Yeah, and I think I did say the motion was adopted.
Yes, sorry, I will notate that. Thank you.
Not necessarily. Okay, so then, let's go to the Investment Committee Report. And is this going to be, is Pruitt on the line? Okay, if not, Pruitt. Okay, why don't Ramsey, you want to introduce Steve or you have any comments?
Madam Chair, I can just step in. Pruitt is traveling internationally and may have just some difficulty. But we met prior to this meeting in a special called session, received a briefing from staff with regards to an investment option. And the Investment Committee unanimously recommended the adoption of the recommendation as presented by staff. And I know staff is here and available to provide any other additional details.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Steve, you want to add anything or Anthony?
I, I think the, the investment recommendation, which is not noted on the memo, is, is Mr. Atkins identified, we just had a special called meeting to hold that, so it was not obviously provided in the memo, but we did present an investment recommendation for an investment up to seventy five million to be shared across all KERS and SPRS portfolios in the Strategic Value Special Situations Fund Six, which would be part of our private equity allocation. We're happy to answer any questions or go into detail. However, that the board would like us to handle that, we can hit the highlights of, of the investment, or if you guys wanted to go ahead and take a vote, given that you've had a chance to review the materials, happy to handle it that way as well.
Okay. Let me see if there's a number of people in the meeting with you, but is there anybody on the board now that would like to get any further information on the Strategic Value Special Situations Fund?
Lynn, it's Mary. Just one question. The seventy five million, that is our maximum exposure. They cannot call above?
Correct. The commitment level is up to a dollar amount, and in this case, it is seventy five million to be allocated across the portfolios. Typically, what we'll see for these is, is you never actually reach the full commitment called. I think, you know, what we typically model is, is anywhere from, from eighty to ninety percent being called. So that would be the maximum exposure across all portfolios.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chilton has his hand raised.
Okay, John?
Yes. Given the fact that there's lots of people from the general public and Kentucky employees listening, it might be good to give a two-minute summary of what the investment is, because they probably did not hear the Investment Committee meeting.
Sure, I'll, I'll have Anthony cover. I'll, I'll give a, how about, how about we split it one minute and one minute, John? I'll give you a, you know, a, a very high overview as, as I did at the Investment Committee meeting and, and probably to just some, lay some groundwork in back background color. And we've discussed at multiple committee and board meetings over the last few years, staff has maintained what we would call a structural the private equity asset class. You've noticed we have not brought a lot of recommendation for investments in this asset class in the last several years. And that's primarily as we view the, the risk reward propositions offered in competing asset classes really to be better investment opportunities for the funds. We provide a lot of detail on, on the, the private equity market currently, but you know, I think the, the summary would be that we, we really don't believe that the current markets for private equity has materially improved, especially with the rate environment and liquidity issues that they continue to face. But we do believe that this investment is a unique differentiated strategy that will present a compelling opportunity within a market space that should provide attractive opportunities over what we see as a coming cycle. And this again is with a manager that has a proven track record of execution in the space and has been managing money for the system for almost ten years. So that's the high level. Anthony will provide a very quick overview and a detail.
Yeah, thank you. Can we go to page one sixty six, please? Okay, thank you. So this is Strategic Value Partners. They are a manager that we have worked with since twenty eighteen. You can see in the middle on the chart there, we committed to Fund Four and, and then subsequently Fund Five in twenty twenty one. And then last year, the board here approved some investment in a toll road in Texas in a continuation vehicle that was coming out of Fund Four. And so that's, that's something that all the KNS plans have exposure to. And with, what Strategic Value Partners does, it's a little different than other folks, is try to buy companies through the debt. So they tend to target companies that are a bit stressed, their debt is trading below par. They, they directly source a lot of the debt through banks, either US or European banks, about half, about half and half of the portfolio ends up being Europe and US depending on the opportunities and which ones end up gaining control over. So through that sourcing, if those companies do end up restructuring, often they can take control of them, much like a private, most other privately companies, firms would, except it's at a much lower basis since they got it through the debt. It's usually created out of a much lower valuation than the previous buyer did. And then they also have an operational team that has also been working on the underwriting and then the investment subsequently to improve things and hopefully grow them and before they exit. So that's something that the strategy had done for several years. I've been in two funds with them already that have been performing well. And I think now there's been, as we know, interest rates have gone up the past few years since the last one, and there's been a bit more stress in some of the private equity backed companies that are levered and how, how it's going to get significantly higher interest burden. And so they've been able to take over quite a few companies, I think, in the past couple of years and see the opportunity set as growing. companies, I think in the past couple of years, and see the opportunity set as growing for, for Fund VI. And so that's something that we found attractive. They've also started to dip into real estate as well. They've been hired, they've hired and grown a team in the past year or so to capitalize on that and have been very choosy on assets to buy around, around the European US, including some office, which I think they and some, a few other managers are starting to, to go into, given how large the discounts are there to previous values. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about specifics. But yes, those are some of the areas that they have been focused on. So real estate, some industrial companies, a few that were affected by COVID in this last fund. So some they had, they did some, they were able to take aircraft and, and investment airlines, which were obviously having trouble in 2020, as well as a couple, I think a housing related company. So, so there are several ones that they were able to buy at discount and are actually harvesting now.
And as Anthony highlighted in the investment, sorry, Lynn, as Anthony highlighted, just one more comment, as Anthony highlighted, committee meeting. So we, we see we've had exposure and it's not uniform across portfolios. As we know, some of the, the pension portfolios were not investing in private equity due to liquidity concerns, you know, for, for an extended period of time. Obviously, we've, we've had some resolution with that and a surety of, of funding has, has helped us to be able to invest in, in some of these less liquid investments. But Fund IV that we are invested in across the systems is in harvest. And Fund V, I believe, has a very short investment period left, so we'll begin harvesting and returning capital. So as those investments roll off, we'll, we'll be funding new investments in this new fund, should this be ratified.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions of Steve or Anthony? I have one.
Sure.
I'm not sure I understood this from you, Anthony. Does the SVSS, which are the one we're going into, also have part of the toll road in Texas that we have? So are we now, theoretically, our exposure to the toll road is slightly higher? Is that correct?
It's slightly higher. It's the, if you see the 32 on the page under the 63025 NAV. So the KRS plans, all six of them are invested and it's that, that's 32 million of net asset value as of June, because that, that vehicle is just a toll road. And we actually have that in the real return portion of the portfolio since the toll road is, you know, more of an infrastructure asset. So, so yes, we do have more. To Fund IV.
And the other two. And the other two. Got it.
But Fund V, all, all plan, all six KNS plans invested, so.
Okay. Okay. I think we have a motion. Is that correct, Steve? We need a motion?
Madam Chair, I would recommend that we, as a full board, ratify the recommendation of the Investment Committee and authorize staff to proceed as recommended.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And so with that, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. And thanks to the investment staff for a lot of hard work to get here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is John and the CEO update.
Yeah, good morning again. I would just wanted to mention several things that have been proceeding in the last three months since our last meeting. Some of these are committee meetings, which I attended and participated in more or less according to each, the need in each committee. I've been monitoring the RFP process that's related to investment consultants, and that is an ongoing and open RFP. I attended a couple of PPOB, Public Pension Oversight Board meetings. The last one I could not attend and Lynn attended that one. Those occur monthly in the, in the capital annex. There are some things that I worked on during the last quarter that will be discussed in the closed session. The, the health plan for retirees was discussed earlier. The trustee election was approved today, the slate of trustees or candidates to be trustees that the ballots will go out in January and they will take office next April 1. The Audit Committee continues to deal with the accounts receivable. You saw a new reporting mechanism today. Along with this, they are updating the the computer systems in order to assist collection from the various people, various employers, resolve differences and get the money into the system, get it invested. The Investment Committee has dealt with several things that have been, one of which has been reported today. And just a reminder on the Impact Forum, that the two-day meeting that we're going to have in October, really good that we're going to get a, hopefully 100% attendance of the KRS trustees. And that'll be very informative in terms of providing information needed to effectively serve on the board. That's all I've got right now.
Thank you, John. John, I'm, I'm not sure everybody knows, but I know there's been a lot of hard work going into everything on the, on the impact meeting, but also that they have structured it so that we will be able to get our required 12 hours of continuing education by attending. So looking forward to it. And I guess that's, in fact, that's the next time the board will get together, I think. Yeah. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to number 12. And number 12 is the calendar. I think Sherry has given everybody the calendar. I just want to, I'll need a motion and we'll see if there's any discussion. Okay, there's no discussion. Is there a motion to approve the 2026 to 2027 Board Committee Meeting Calendar?
I still move, Lynn.
Thank you, Mary. And I think there was a second.
Yeah, my second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, so Ryan, you're up.
Yes, thank you very much. Some of this has been covered, so I'll just try to hit the highlights. I know we got a full agenda and some, some more to come here. Just starting, item number one, the Personnel Cabinet, we've talked about this previously. Mike has mentioned it in budget because it did have an impact. The statewide IT job review has been completed. So that, that has been reflected in Mike's number for the Budget Work Group. And those, those impacts have been, been completed by the Personnel Cabinet. Moving down to the item number two, Sherry, we have been able to take advantage, I think, at all levels of state government. The state, the governor's leadership program and the executive leaders program, we're taking advantage of that with individuals from KPPA. Internally, we've talked about the Leadership Academy, the future leaders of KPPA, that's gone very successful, as well as the interim program. That just concluded. Lori and HR got very positive feedback from that program and we're already working towards next year. I just sent an email, kind of some parameters and some of the goals that we have groups for next year. So that seems to, to continue and was very successful. Strategic planning, the, the four areas we continue to move forward with, I wanted to flag organizational excellence, the leadership program that I just mentioned, they have a major project that they've been working on, the mandates. We, we've looked at the six mandates, we're likely to rebrand those, bring those back here in the near term. But I think it's very impactful for future leaders to take that project on, come up with it. And we think it was a, it was a very good product. And then the balance of the strategic planning is in there. I will mention the last item, the governance, that we are working with personnel on the Compliance Officer. I believe Mr. Atkins had, had made previous comments and we've recognized that early on in the program. And we are completing the paperwork to move the Compliance Officer to report to the CFO to get outside of investments for reasons that we've discussed previously. Mike, Mike talked about the budgets, I'll skip that. And John covered the Impact Forum. Just briefly on the PPOB presentation, Aaron and I thought that presentation went really well. Obviously, the topics are directed by the chairs and we do appreciate, as John said, Lynn, attending. Then I'm going to drop down just to the, the kudos. Mike had talked about the employer invoicing. I think that, that is of note. He did show the GFOA award. I want to focus on him for a minute. I think that's a heavy lift. Separating the financial statements, this is the first time ever. I think he and his team did a really good job on that and just wanted to make sure I articulated and flagged that for the board. There's a note in there about Crystal Hughes, very positive kudos to her. And then there was a handwritten letter, I just thought I would mention and conclude with this, talking about a member, we're very member centric, about how difficult it was, loss of a loved one, and how responsive our team was. I handed that letter to Aaron and said, I thought, you know, this is very impactful. And she said, we get these all the time. There are members that, that take the time and energy to articulate the impact. And I, I think that that's important to highlight. So kudos to that team and helping members through very difficult times. With that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ryan. I, I think you probably know what question I've got, and that is some status on the investment of, the investment team's office.
Yes. So Steve, Rebecca and I toured the, the facility. We were very impressed. It is still with facilities. They have to execute the lease, but we are moving forward on that. But facilities does control those execution of the lease document. But we're very excited and we're very close.
I told Rebecca she's not allowed to retire until we have the offer.
A second.
She's, she's going.
She might, then she might be going and starting to march in front of the building, the Finance Cabinet building.
I just need to know that motion. That's, no.
Okay, well, you know, I'm going to ask. Okay, Ryan, new business for me? I don't have any. Does any of the other board members have anything they want to bring up in new business?
Ms. Hampton, Mr. Willer does have his hand up.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. I just wanted to highlight that the fiscal year performance press release just went out. And obviously, well, all the detail of performance for fiscal year is contained in the report. I just wanted to highlight that for the fiscal year that the KRS pension composite did produce a return 11, 11 of 11.30, which outpaced the blended benchmark of 982. And the KRS insurance composite produced a return of 11.55. I don't mean the benchmark by 76 basis points. And as Mr. Eager, Mr. Eager always liked to highlight, you know, putting that in context, the outperformance versus the benchmark for the fiscal year was roughly equivalent to about 103 million of outperformance for the KRS pension portfolios and 22 million of outperformance for the KRS insurance portfolio. So just wanted to highlight that and tie that back to the press release that just went out.
Thanks, Steve. And if I'm not mistaken, we have, I think according to Mike, we have two years of of good outperformance. And I expect that that outperformance, now there would be two out of the five, the actuaries will, actuaries will come in with some, some good information this year. So thank you. Okay. We, what we're going into closed session and is there, and Vicky, are you or Mike gonna, Michael gonna read the statement?
I do.
Okay, so is there a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Is, okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted. And Michael, you'll do the statement?
Yes, ma'am. A motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose, and such motion having carried by majority vote in open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney client privilege. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Okay, so.